It is seven o'clock and I'd like to invite everyone to stand for the flash of the flag.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, my nation under our. It is all liberty, justice, and law.
Yeah, gosh, that'll be on the boardroom. I think it was made here. Okay, at seven o'clock, welcome to our town meeting of March 4th, first meeting of March. I'd like to have a motion to approve the financial report, or the minutes of February 18th. A motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion on the minutes?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Financial report, do we have a motion to approve the financial report and payment of the bills?
So moved.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion on the financial report?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, Lou, let's, you were on. Oh, I do, but I didn't see it, I didn't see it on here exactly. Okay, very good. Well, we got a certificate of recognition tonight, and we have an individual that is here, and I'd like to read this certificate of recognition, and I'd like to invite Mr. Jay Combs to come up. This is on behalf, and I'll come on down there, because we've got to get a photograph taken with him, okay? This is a certificate of recognition for Mr. Jay Combs, whereas Jay Combs and his family have called Elton a home for 28 years, and whereas Jay's experience in high school and college sports, as well as his participation in his son's sports activity are the foundation upon which Jay built his career as a coach and referee, and whereas Jay has volunteered as a referee for Elton Parks and Rec basketball program for several years, always refusing a salary, and whereas Jay clearly recognizes that the greatest investment in our youth is our personal time and attention. Now therefore, on behalf of the Mayor and Commissioners and the citizens of Elton, we hereby extend our sincere appreciation to this outstanding member of our community and witness, we have here on two, set our hands and seal of the town of Elton on its fourth day of March 2015, for Mr. Jay Combs. Oh, he went to get the camera, we'll saw it down. Well, thank you. I'd like to get everyone to come down to get Jay. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Would you like to say a few words? The residents of the town will get you to hold that up and...
No, I just, thanks a lot, I appreciate the influence of the Commissioners, I know personally, Mr. Piner and Mr. Gibbons, Mr. Gibbons was my teacher in high school, that's how old he, I mean, how old I am, and so, and then I'm doing you, Mr. Alt, so, it's, appreciate it, and I'm glad to help out Mary, and my son was an employee here for years, so you guys treated him so good, and it was the least I could do, so I appreciate your kind words.
Well, thank you so much.
Yep, you're welcome.
Hold it. Oh, see? Get the official.
Yeah, make it look right, thank you. See, you must be in photography as well.
Yes. Excellent. Jay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jay, we did put that check in the bag for all of this.
Yeah, that's right.
I've got flashes in my eyes.
Yeah, what?
Flash.
You have to find.
Okay, Lou, you're on, or did I miss something else?
I think that's the, uh, item I have, initial item I have is the Annexation Resolution A1-2015 for pivotal utility holdings, Inc., doing business as Elton Gas for annexation of property located 128 to Bell Hill Road, Taxman 303, Parcel 1020. The resolution contains all of the particulars for the annexation of this property, and if the board accepts it tonight, we'll post it and then initiate a process for the annexation, which will include the introduction, which is tonight, on the 5th, we'll post the annexation in the Town Hall the 9th, the Elton Planning Commission will hold a zoning, or hold a regular meeting, not a public hearing, but a meeting, to determine the zoning recommendation, which will be C3 Highway Commercial. March 11th, the first advertisement will appear in the Cecil Wig, we'll send a notice to Cecil County and the Maryland Department of Planning, March 18th, second advertisement will wig, April 1st, annexation plan will go to Cecil County and the Maryland Department of Planning, available, and it's available for public review. May 6th, a public hearing will be held by the Mayor and Commissioners, you can adopt it at that time, if you do adopt it, it'll be effective June 20th, 45 days from the date of adoption, a copy thereafter will be sent to the county clerk, and also the Maryland Department of Legislative Services. And additionally, at that time, we'll send a copy to FEMA, because the regulations that we'll adopt at the, and before April, before May, will require us to notify FEMA of any changes in the boundaries of the town development. I'd recommend that you adopt Annexation Resolution A1-2015 for pivotal holding, utility holdings.
Do we have a motion to accept the Resolution A1-2015 of pivotal holdings?
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. See, I know we have a few folks out here tonight that's gonna come up and ask for annexation, you see how simple that was? Pretty simple. All right, Lou, you're on.
Okay, I have waivers for alcoholic beverage restrictions, one is for the Elton Alliance, and it's for the activity, the Citizen of the Year activity, and it's March 26th. I have a second one for Menahans Irish Pub, it's for March 14th, Downtown St. Patrick's Day event, and one for the, March, also for North Street Hotel, on March 14th Downtown, St. Patrick's Day event, which obviously is gonna be a very big event downtown. I would ask the board to accept those waivers, approve the waivers.
What was the third one?
One's North Street.
There's three waivers, one's for Elton Alliance, one's for Menahans, and one's for North Street Hotel.
Do we have a motion to approve the alcoholic waiver for the Alliance, Menahans, and North Streets?
So moved.
We have a motion, and a second, any discussion?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item I have is the One Hill Rehabilitation Project, we received six bids for this, however, the most responsive bid is from Menowin Inc. from Dirk, Pennsylvania, at a cost of $526,200. The two lower bid, low bid, two companies that low bid, or lower bids, I'm sorry, did not have credentials at the time of the bidding, and the other, the other three companies are much, much higher. I would recommend that we award the bid to Menowin Inc. of Dirk, Pennsylvania, for $526,200 for the rehab of the One Hill Water Tower.
Do we have a motion to give the award to Menowin Inc.?
Menowin, right.
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second, there's a second.
Any discussion on the project?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll issue contracts for that, for them, and after we receive the contract, the performance payment forms and insurance information, we'll have a meeting and issue a notice to proceed. I would look at probably April to start that, it's a little bit cold, you know, up on that tower at this time. Next item I have is ordinance 6-2014, Elton Zoning Ordinance, a public hearing was held January 12th by the Planning Commission, public hearing was held February 4th by the Mayor and Commissioners, and introduced at that time, is subject to adoption at this time, relates to Article 16, sign, Section 8, permitted signs, subsection 7, permanent residential subdivision or multi-family sign. Since we've been through the public hearing process, I would recommend the board adopt ordinance 6-2014.
Do we have a motion to approve ordinance 6-2014?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes. Louis, I need your help on this one. The Mayor, Michelle and I were talking, and the only, the only issue that we were coming up with was line seven, where it talks about electronic messaging boards, so shall be prohibited.
Right.
We have one community that has an electronic board as you exit, what happens with that?
Would be grandfathered.
But there would be no more, any other community that wanted to, say, One Hill, wanted to put it as you exit, they wouldn't be able to do that then?
They wouldn't be able to do it once this is in effect, but if the sign existed prior to the ordinance, it would be grandfathered, I think, than Patriots' Plan.
Patriots' Plan, sure.
That's the one I think now. We wouldn't bar them from something that was done prior to the effective date of this ordinance.
Yeah, is there, is there any thought about, and I think you raised a good point, DJ, I'm just thinking that, is there, is there any value to not using the words prohibited, and, or is that what we're trying to get away from, the special exceptions for that type of sign?
I don't know, this was a recommendation by the Planning Commission, and it's been through two public hearings without comment, and we changed our amendment, so I can't advise what the intent is, other than what it's written.
You know what, what's that?
To get away from your type of...
All together. Can I call Mr. Keen real quick? I'm gonna put the pressure on you.
Absolutely.
I'm gonna put the pressure, what, help me understand the thinking on the not allowing the digital or the message boards in a residential zone.
I think the feeling is, it's, I mean, I use the word flashy, gaudy, it just kind of detracts from the, from the division, or the homes, the homes that are in that area. And I think the one that catches everybody's eye is the 101-279, where at the school, I mean, that one's...
Oh, I got you, I got you.
Red, white, is actually distracting, so, I think it's kind of, you know, a little bit too much, too much over the top.
Listen, you showed that you guys took it under consideration, so I will support the planning board for you.
There wasn't any opposition or anything from any community?
All right, we had a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Okay, I've got a very small agenda tonight, I have mine. Mary Jo, you're on.
I'm with you, I have no complaints this evening.
Mr. Piner?
I'm, I just got one comment about the Mayor and the Commissioners' golf tournament and basketball tournament. I'm still, when I say I'm, it's we, are still seeking to try to have some kind of basketball tournament, hopefully between now and the end of March, even though it's coming real close, I thought I had everything in place as of last week, but between the snow and the cancellation of schools, it moves some things around, so I'm hoping to get this done, but if not, we can always table it for next year, I'm talking about for the basketball. But little kids are already asking, and we still have a tournament, and I said we still learn, try to seek what we can and see what we can, to try to provide some kind of a little activity, day form, still looking for the facility to use it, because I've had questions about whether or not we're gonna be able to use it at three different places that I had located before. The golf tournament is still, is gonna be still set in August, and we tried to change dates on that, but some other people had, they locked up, so that's all mine. And as far as the recognitions for the, I guess, the employee, I guess we're still working on that, I didn't forget it, we're gonna do that in quarterly, right, Michelle?
That was the initial, yeah.
Okay, so that's my report.
Thank you.
Charles?
I have nothing but to piggyback on Earl, what you're saying, if you don't have your basketball tournament during the March, maybe there's something you might be to do to shadow it during the summer, because that's a perfect time for a lot of kids.
And Mike, before I turn it over to the DJ real quick, I did want to mention Norman Wilson, who was our town attorney for many, many years, had a fall on the ice, and he did break his hip, and Norman's in, he's in rehab now?
Yes.
At Genesis, and if anyone would like to go visiting, he's certainly over there, and he'd probably love to see everybody. I'm sorry, DJ.
No, you're fine, I'm with you guys tonight, but I don't have much. The only thing I want to bring up is about the, being involved in the first budget is extremely challenging, the amount of people that come to you and request this and that, and you're trying to dissect numbers and figure, figure things out, and the last thing that I want to do is to ever just rearrange the deck chairs on the Titanic, and I really think, moving forward and looking at everything that's going on, I really think that we could put a fantastic plan together to move Elton forward, and I'm just really excited to be a part of it. There's a lot of things in the works, I can tell everybody that we've already started on the budget, we've already at least looked at it and heard from the department heads, and I'm very anxious to see what the Mayor has as far as the plans of 3, 5, and extending from there, to see where we can go, and then hopefully everybody get behind it, and I'd encourage everybody to ask questions, I'm definitely a question guy, as everybody has found out, I like to ask questions, I think there's anything wrong with it, I like to dissect things and see what's going on, but just, I welcome this, this next budget, and to take a close look at it, and make sure that we spend the residents' money properly, that's all I have.
Very nice. While you're on the budget, and I see Dan out there, Dan, the, something that the Elton Police Department presented to us was a strategy moving forward from the police car, capital equipment per se, I'd love to get that from the Public Works Department, and it may not be as easy to put together an eight or nine-year cycle, but I'd like to see that for the equipment, the trucks that you may be needing, and that you foresee that you'll need, as well as the grass cutting equipment. Thank you, Dan. Thanks, guys.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I do it one time.
One time?
I was gonna mention it earlier, but then everything was voted on together. The Citizen of the Year this year, for those of you who haven't read in the paper, is Roger Owens, a great person, has done a lot for the community, Coats for Kids, the Halloween Parade, he's done a lot, I can't name them all without reading it, but it is March 26th, and it is upstairs, and there are still, is still time to get tickets if you haven't gotten them yet.
Thank you. And Chief, I did, I did want to make a comment, that I felt that Larry Walder did a nice job of putting that together, I thought it was very impressive, but he had that.
I agree.
Okay, this is, this is 7:17 or so, and now we're gonna open up the floor to the public to say a few words, and first on the agenda, I've got Mr. Ron Walder. Ron, come up and state your, of course, we know, we probably know your address, but please state it up there for the record.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Ron Walder, 242 Doubletree, Elton, Maryland. I just got one question, about them signs, I was listening, you said they were distracting, you talking about a light that lights up?
Yes, the messaging signs, I think the one that, I think the one if you're, in particular, if, to give you a visual, would be if you're heading Elton Newark Road, and at the Tri, the Tri-State Christmas...
That blue thing?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that makes sense. Yeah, Christmas trees do the same thing.
Yeah.
Christmas trees, you know.
I got you.
Okay, I don't need to go any further than that. I'm gonna come up with a song, I ain't gonna sing it, but you've heard it, I love New York. Who was that?
Frank Sinatra.
Right, okay. I love Elton, I really love Elton. I've been here for a long time, I was gone for a time, but my heart was still here, my heart was still here. Inevitably, some of us were probably anywhere from 15 to 20 years old, my first came here in 1956, I don't know anybody's age, but I know mine, so I've been here a long time, if not in the flesh, but in the spirit, I've been here. And I do love this town very much, I love the people in it that I know, some I've known for a number of years, Dave Williams, I've known Dave for 40-some years. I have seen him long, but I still remember him, knowing, there's a lot of people that I know, some of them don't remember me, and some of them do, and they remember me, remember me, some by good and some by bad, okay? And I don't intend to get back on the bad record.
Okay.
Okay, I don't intend to do that, not at all, first thing through my mind, but I love this town. I said I was gonna talk about the snow removal, I'm gonna do this in a congenial and diplomatic way, I love this town so much, that if I had to, I'd come down here and I'd give Michelle $30 and say, here, this is for the town. People are gonna say, well, taxes take care of their problem, well, I love that, I love it, man, okay? We're stewards, we're stewards of God's money, it's God's money, it ain't our money. The people own this town, but ironically, God owns this town, okay? And he says, being good stewards, count the cost, okay? Well, the town is doing a miraculous job on doing their foundation with what they have, so I'm a citizen of this town, I would be more than happy to donate, if you will, $10 a month, $5 a month, what's the difference?
I'm liking you.
I love it that much, you know, be your own judge, I mean, you decide, I'm not gonna, you know, I'm not gonna try and convince you. I have a meeting set up, a tentative meeting, I'm sorry, with YWCA, or YMCA, YW is also part of that, okay? That company, that company there has been in business since 1844 by a guy named George, George Williams, and when he founded that, he helped people, kids, that came in from cities into a town like ours, and they housed them to keep them out of bars, because that's the only place they could go was in bars, you follow me? To, so, to alleviate them from getting involved in alcohol, he opened up his house, okay? Now, corporate does not, does not support the YMCA, you know who's supported? We do. It's a community thing, okay? There, I talked to Mr. Pacheco, I believe it is.
That's right.
Okay, I talked to him.
You've been part of the town of Elton now?
I certainly did, I made an appointment, we didn't, I talked to him, and I told him just what I'm telling you, I'm not, we're verbatim, but I'm telling you, I talked to him about the situation at hand there, okay? Their corporate office is in Switzerland, I think it is, it's in another country, you know how many members there are? You know how many members there are?
I don't, I don't, Ron.
Is worldwide, 57 million.
Hmm.
This one here, I think, got 1,200 members, can you imagine, is it each one come in that door, even though they pay about a dollar a day per year, okay? What would be the problem, standing out there, like they do in front of Walmart store, and they got that can, you know, the Salvation Army, and they pick, put their money out, it'd blow your mind as to how much money they get, okay? How much do you love the YMCA? Would you be willing to put a buck? A buck, that's all I want, if you got a buck, give me 50 cents.
I hear you.
See, some people say that's panhandling.
Well, look, I want to get you back on to snow removal.
Well, that's where I'm getting.
Okay.
Okay, I've already, I've already cleared that, I had to get this other off my mind.
Okay.
Other than that, you're doing a fine job, everybody's doing fine, everybody's looking good, I had my tooth pulled out, laughed, I'll tell you what, he said, ain't gonna be bad, you know, he grew up Dr. Levin, he come out there, looked at the needle, about that long, what are you gonna do with that? I remember, 45 years since I've been to a dentist, I'm in all the spirits of it, brother, you have no idea, but I am, enjoy.
Well, thank you. Thank you so much, Ron.
Okay.
It's based in Geneva, Switzerland.
Correct. Oh, no.
Is he marketing? No. I think he said Switzerland.
Steve lives in Holly Hall, give your name and your address if you would.
Steve Lankis, 22 Boulder, Bolden Street. They come and dump them around, but it's really nice.
Yeah, I hear you.
I'm here to speak on behalf of some other people living in the neighborhood, I think we're, like, I've been there 42 years, with nothing to address, but I'm always looking in, I'm not part of Elton, and I think it'd be good for us to be annexed in, because it's, I think it benefits us, I mean, the town's growing, it's going in the right direction, has the best police force in the county, and I just think it'd be good for us to have, be part of Elton, instead of always seeing what's going on and having a voice, and I think it'd be nice to have a voice in the town of Elton.
Well, thank you. Lou, what's, we have a member of our community asking to move forward with a petition, what's, what sort, what do we need to do?
Well, if he's, if he's 22 older, Bolden Street, he's probably contiguous and adjoining the town.
He is.
If he's contiguous and adjoining, he can petition himself.
Right.
As his, as um...
Proper. Well, I, I think we'd like to get, well, I hear what you're saying, what would be more value at this point, should we, should we send letters out to the Holly Hall area, or should we?
We're planning to send a letter to every resident of Holly Hall, which will include the turn of 7th and all their property, in compared to the town taxes, tax liability, the town was added to their tax, their real property tax, also their comparison of their in-town and out-of-town water rates, and trash, we're, I'm gonna hypothetically, on the trash rate, and the trash service. Do you have a trash service where you are? Just out of curiosity, how much do you pay a...
It averages about $20, $22 a month.
$22 a month?
We're a senior citizen, it's like 18.
Louis, you recall the time previous, I thought we, I thought they came before us for an annexation, do you remember how long ago that was, and?
I think it was around 2000, isn't that?
Yeah.
Negative Woods, and we had a scant turnout at that time.
What would be the...
I think it's 20% of the voters and 20%...
Correct.
If I recall correctly.
I don't think we got 20%.
Yeah, we need 20% of voters, and it owns the property.
So, once we get the letter together, it would probably benefit the annexation process, if you petitioned all the doors, or went around and got them to sign that, and the, I think that in the Holly Hall neighborhood in particular, would be one that would be, it's gonna be about a break-even scenario for you. When I say break-even, we ran some numbers, and your, your water rate and your sewer rate would be half of what it is today, your trash collection would be, of course, picked up in your, well, I don't want to say necessarily picked up in your town. necessarily picked up in your town's taxes, but I think there is a twenty-five dollar per quarter fee. Is that correct, Steve? But the bottom line is, it's, the assessment of the break-even point is if your house is assessed for around a hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar mark, it's a, it's kind of a break-even for you. If it's assessed more than that, then it's gonna cost you a little bit more to be in the town. But the advantages you have, I think you mentioned, one of the, the good things is, is, you know, you have a presence, a police presence is gonna be going through there, probably on a pretty regular basis going through your neighborhood.
Snow removal.
You'll have snow removal and...
We have to, in order to do that, we would have to have the county donate the roads to the town, because they're county roads. If we were successful in annexing the entire Holly Hall subdivision, then we would have to approach the county about taking over the roads for maintenance and...
That was one of my comments, because I ran for a county seat. Knowing who was in the town, who wasn't, who's, that was a nightmare, just like when we ran for town election. The thing I wanted to know, as far as the county comprehensive plan, everything was set up through the comprehensive plan through the county and then zoned in to Elton, all that stuff has to be looked at, right? Before we can move forward.
Also, the registrations, after a subdivision's annex, the registrations that are in that area also go towards our highway user revenue and increase, and along with the street miles.
So, so, seeing that the town of Elton, that we would prefer to be just like that board zoned in, eight-mile radius all the way around or wherever we wanna come out with, that's where we should try to form our, our line, our town of Elton line to the Delaware Line, all the way over to Newark Road. Where are we starting our, our boundaries? So, those are the things that I would like to look at.
Yeah, we're gonna fill in the donuts. We're gonna fill up the donut holes, as you say.
I have a couple of questions. First of all, I'm for it. I absolutely agree of being a question person. I would wanna know the expenses to the town. I hear the revenue side, but I'm curious about the expense side of the water lines, how old the water lines are. Are they our water lines?
Yes.
All right, so we know the age of them and when they, as far as there, is there another pond out there that we would have to cut? As far as the roads and the sidewalks, what conditions are they in? How many homes are out there? That's actually not rhetorical on that one. How many homes are out there?
There's a, there's a total of four hundred donut holes in the town of Elton.
That particular donut hole, how many, how many houses are out there? Twenty or were?
Yeah, I think probably a hundred houses.
So, then, then you have the drain on services such as the, well, the police department and everything else. I would like to see, and again, I'm for it. I'm just trying, I'm just looking at the business model moving forward and what kind of big businesses do we have coming in that can help offset residential? So, I'd like to see everything there before we ever voted yes, but again, I am for something like that.
Good question.
I think the major problems areas are Holly Hall and Thompson Estates, because it's mixed up. I mean, when you go into Thompson State, you'll have three houses, town, two county, three town, and nobody knows whether sheriff's, sheriff's office, police, and it's very dangerous when that happens.
I think last night was a...
Last night was a perfect example.
Was a great example. You have a part of the town, you, there's no question, it's, to me, it's the town of Elton, but it's not the town of Elton.
Correct.
And there was a shooting last night, and I almost tend to believe that if we had, not that we could've prevented that, but if there had been some presence through the area, whether it's police presence or whether it's our public works, keeping the street a little bit cleaner, it may have changed the perception of everything in there. Just never know. Well, Mr. Lankis, thank you.
Yes, sir.
And before I call up, Mr., Walter, could you come up?
I need to ask a quick question. Walter, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Sorry. Button Woods, how many have we received back from Button Woods?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six?
Thirty-six responses out of a hundred-and-fifty, I think.
Okay, thank you.
Walter, please give your name and your address.
My name is Walter Chukowski, and I live at one-oh-five Bowling Lane, Thompson Estates. And I'm here this evening to request on my behalf to be annexed into the town of Elton.
Just you or the donut hole?
I'd like to see the donut hole.
The whole lane of Bowling Lane is certainly all county.
Right, county.
And, and I think that we've got the letter in draft, or do we have that available yet?
No, not yet, but that is one of the things, we were Thompson State, top hole.
We're gonna send it out, but you're officially on record now requesting.
Okay. The other point I wanted to make is, I am completely surrounded by the town limits, north, south, east and west.
So, you're in a very similar situation as Mr. Lankis. He could come in by himself and you can actually come in by yourself.
My property backs up, the property behind me is in town.
Do we charge water hookup fees? We don't, right?
No, if they're connected, wouldn't have any, maybe facility fees wouldn't apply.
You know, I already have it worked.
No, I'm just making sure there's no hidden calls to the residents that are out there all of a sudden, surprise, you have a bill.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Okay, Mr. Lemon, come on down. Mr. Lemon at one-oh-three Walnut Lane.
DJ, you sort of opened it up when you said comments and questions on the budget. Thank you. Makes it easy for me.
Yes, sir.
I have, and I do have comments and questions on the budget. Mostly, in fact, they're all favorable. I was impressed with the way you were approaching it in the meeting and everything. I thought that was, that was really good. Couple housekeeping questions I have. It would be nice if you would, I'm trying to find, this departmental budgets page in this thing, it would be nice if you would put the page number that these are on, because I had trouble following you. You'd say, "Where's the personnel?" I'm going through this, you know? That's an easy thing. You don't have to create another piece of paper, just put the page number. So, if I wanna look up personnel, just go over here and it's page two.
Understand.
Just a suggestion. Second thing is, there's, you have an awful lot of capital requests in this budget. And I have a feeling when you add up all the numbers, you might have to take a second look, let me put it that way. So, my suggestion is that the capital requests be prioritized, number one, two, three. And that way, it makes it, it makes the, it encourages the people that are putting them in to think it through as to what's most important. And then number two, it makes it easy for you guys as far as, you know, how far to go. I haven't seen the numbers, but it wouldn't surprise me if you were a million dollars over where you were last time. And I say, I haven't seen the numbers, I've seen some of them.
We, actually, I don't think any of us is saying the projected revenue numbers yet.
No, I don't think anybody has. I'm just making a guess. The next thing is, I didn't see anything in the, so far, in the plans for a cost reduction. And it seems to me that when you go do this project that you're doing, that the different departments should come up with a plan for a cost reduction. And I think that's very important. And of course, there's some suggestions that have been made here, sort of a double play here. The, to have a suggestion system, that's one way to get a cost reduction and get employee involvement. And that was made by you, DJ, I think, but at any rate, I think it's very important to, to encourage people to concentrate on cost reduction. And that doesn't mean that you cut short your programs, it just means you find better ways to do things. I, a couple more specifics on the meeting. The parks and recreation, I thought the give and take, back and forth was very good. The ideas that you guys had and the thoughts of how to participate and get work, I thought that was all very, very good. The police department, I thought, made it a super presentation. I liked the camera idea. And I think the, and I'm, I'm gonna talk a little bit more about that later, but I think the selling point to me was when, when the captain said that it records the behavior of the officer when he's talking to somebody else. That really impressed me. I think that's, that in itself would sell the program to me. The more I look at policing or the community relations is, is a big part of it anymore. And I think, but I know if I had a camera on me, I'd be careful what I said. Maybe I should have one all the time, right? Anyway, I just wanna mention, I think, I think that was an excellent presentation that he made, and I'm gonna get back to that in a minute.
You're on camera now, you know.
Yeah, I found that out during the election. Somebody came up and talked to me about what I'd said in the meetings, and I said, "How did you know it? You weren't there." That's how you learn, I guess. Anyway, you talked about the, the last two years, the anticipated fund balance that was used, or that was in the budget but not used. And my, my comment is that this should not necessarily, having that kind of a fund balance and not using it should not be anticipated for fiscal year sixteen, because the way I look at things down here, I think these open positions in the police department and other things will be filled this year, as opposed to where we, where we've been and we have, we have more people in place and things to get things done. So, I just think, I think that's a mistake when you're putting this all together to think that, well, we can put an extra million dollars in because it won't be used anyway. I'm not so sure that's the way to go. So, so much for that. And, you know, you, the town has a, has some money, but the state of Maryland has what they call rainy day fund, and I think you could label this the same way. Today's a good day to talk about rain, isn't it?
Yes.
But anyway, I wanna get back, I wanna talk about the public works and then I'll get back to the police. I thought the public works was really a good presentation. I think it was creative. He showed ideas. And to me, my way to look at it, it doesn't make any difference whether you agree with what he presented or don't agree. I just think he made, it was a creative approach to the budget. It was very obvious to me that Dan thought a lot about this and came up with some new ideas, and he had a lot of numbers that he put together and everything. I thought he did a very good job. Now, I talked about, I talked about purchasing, and I'm gonna get into that a little bit. The, on the, as far as the police department presentation, I think that was, to me, for people that are not familiar with purchasing, that was a teaching moment. What the captain did, the way he explained what he did, sourcing things out, talking to people, getting samples, all the different things that he did. And if it's on camera, you ought to go back and look at it. I thought he did a really super job of getting into this, these body cameras with, and then he, I think he finally landed on Taser is where he was gonna buy it, but the, that whole thing, I think, is reflective on what's involved in purchasing, which seems to be an issue down here. And that was brought up in the public works thing. So, you can always hire a buyer, but a buyer will not know the ins and outs, like, like the police captain knows the ins and outs of what he's working on, and nobody else, or maybe I was in the department, but nobody else will really know the ins and outs of that. So, he was the right man to do it, and he had the right background and the right temperament and everything to handle that. So, I'm, I'm just saying, to me, that was a good example. I thought he did a super job. I guess I said that already. I thought he did a very good job, and I think that's a very good way to, to handle a purchase. So, I had that comment. Then, to get back to the public works, he made a suggestion on purchasing. As I look at it, you have most of the people in two different buildings. So, I'm not sure how you are going to do it all in one building. And that's just a comment I have. The purchasing that's done in the public works, the way I view it, is a very, is a very technical purchasing. And it's, it's the same as what the, what the captain did. He knew, he knew his subject matter backwards and forwards, so he was able to talk to vendors in a knowledgeable manner. And that's the same down in the public works, the people that are, were talking about machinery and equipment and stuff like that, there's only one or two people down there that know anything about it. So, they're the people that should really be discussing these issues with the vendors. So, I just make that comment. And the only other thing I wanna say in, involved in this is the issue of purchasing. Do we have a purchasing documentation system?
We have a procurement policy, if that's what you mean.
What?
We have a procurement policy.
Do you have a receiving and storage policy?
We don't have a receiving department, no.
So, how do you know when, what do you do, how do you know that, how do, how do you know when it's received, where it's received, and how's the paperwork forwarded?
Well, we rely on the department who purchases the goods or services, who send the packings that were there, receive and report or indication or invoice that the goods or services have been received.
I'm just suggesting to you, as you get, if you get into this purchasing thing, I don't know, I don't wanna, I'm not gonna make a comment on whether you should have one or not, purchasing agent, but the, you need, you need purchasing documentation, which you say you have, but you also receive, need to have a, need to lay out something on receiving documentation and a paperwork and, and paperwork flow and goods flow. When a guy ships it in here, he needs to know where to, where to send it, and then it needs to get, to go through the procedure. You probably have that over at your place, so you can tell him how to do it.
I'd like to interject here. I'll tell you a good example for buying a, a hundred-and-fifty-kilowatt generator from Fidelity Power Systems in Baltimore. And how we do that, you know, we initially look at the statewide contract to see if it's available. If it's not, we just have to go on their bid price. Once we've ordered that, and you have our engineer do the specifications and everything, we issue a PO. So, that's the authorization or who covers the money for that. Then I initiate contact with Fidelity about when they will initiate the production of that piece of equipment. They contact us, if their production's done, usually takes about eight to twelve weeks, depends on what kind of equipment it is, and then they contact me. I arrange for that equipment to be shipped to a certain location, for example, the Elton Waste Water Treatment Plant, in this case. Then we'll have a, we have to have a crane operator down there to offload it, because it weighs six thousand pounds, and a transfer switch also weighs about three, three, six hundred pounds. And we offload them there until we need them for our project. We record the serial numbers and everything, then that, that generator will be part of our property schedule that we have insured, make sure it's insured. So, there is a, and I have a file with the time that thing is initiated, the first contact, all the specifications, purchase orders, contact people, when it's received, they have photographs of all this capital equipment and everything. So, we do have a very tight system in terms of that. If you wanna look at nuts and bolts, you can't... If you want to look at nuts and bolts, you can't, I can't, I don't have that.
Well, that sounds good to me and I'm, I know you're heavily involved in, in that type of thing and do a very good job. So, I'm, I think I'm talking about everything else.
Everything else. Thank you.
I'm done.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Lemon. Okay, Mr. Lemon was the last one that signed up. If anyone else would like to have anything to say tonight?
Good, I can go home to dinner.
You can, you can. We're actually, Walter?
Yes, Rob. I'm sorry, when I was talking, I just wanted to mention that the water bill out there at Thompson Estates for three months is ninety dollars. I'm sorry, the trash, trash collection.
Your trash collection was ninety dollars?
For three months. The water bill out there for three months is two-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
Okay. Thank you so much. How many gallons?
I never use the maximum. I, I think it's nine thousand.
Middle, nine.
Up to nine thousand. There's only less than all, we never use the max.
Okay, it's ten minutes to eight. Yep, Mr. Littenberg, come on down.
I don't want to come down, but several months ago, I mentioned that maybe you guys as the mayor and your chief of police should get together with the mayors and the chief of police of the other county, the Thompson County, go to the state's attorney and find out what's going on. Great article in the paper today, the letter, the editor of that person, he's right online. What's going on in this county and this town? The police make their arrest. Same people, they're on probation, what do they do? They slap them on their wrist and put them out on the street again.
I do.
And it's a suggestion and I think that somebody ought to step up and say enough is enough.
Thank you. Okay, it's, no.
Just real quick, a couple of weeks ago...
Give your name, please.
Oh, geez. Pat of a one-thirty-seven Madison Road.
Thank you, Pat.
I'm in, I'm in Thompson Estates where half my block's county and half my block's town, so I know what the people are going through. A few weeks ago, you talked about maybe changing the time for the meetings. Are you giving that any more consideration?
No, actually, I'm waiting for input from the group in general. I would love to see it start, I'd love to see it start at six o'clock, but that's something we, we need to continue to give you some feedback on. I'd rather see the meeting start at six o'clock rather than seven. But that's a comment that everyone else would have to, Mr. Millammon?
I'm in favor of seven, like it is.
All right. Been like that, it's been like that for a long time. Thank you.
We're having battle.
It is, it is now seven minutes to eight and we're gonna, we're gonna actually have a closed meeting to talk to our attorney in regards to, to obtain legal advice on a legal matter and also the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion about an evaluation of employees or officials for whom the town has jurisdiction over. So, do I have a motion to have a closed meeting? We have a motion by Charlie, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing, we're gonna have a closed meeting and we will not reconvene, so I'd like to ask everyone to leave the premises.